I'd like to call this city council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. King?
We dispense with the reading of the minutes, please.
Third order, 3A, correspondence received from city business administrator dated January 3, 2023 regarding updated payroll preparation tax collections. 3B, correspondence received from city business administration regarding budget transfers for various city departments to date. 3C, Scranton redevelopment authority meeting minutes held December 7, 2022. 3D, December open gov report for licenses and permits as received from the Office of Economic and Community Development. 3E, cumulative license permits report as received from the Office of Economic and Community Development. 3F, correspondence received January 3, 2023 from OECD regarding code enforcement report for city council.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items?
I just have two comments on third order items. One, we did get a, an answer from Mr. West, the business administrator, about DPW overtime for the month of November and year ending. Frank, if we could please put that into third order for next week?
I will, sir.
And the other thing is, we did get several emails about different budget transfers in the last week. If we could also add them to the third order for next week. I did like that these were in third order for public view. Thank you.
I will, sir. Thank you. Fourth order, citizens' participation. No, if not received and filed, sorry.
Joan Hoda wanted Scranton. Do we have any more information on the 2021 audit?
We do. I think we got some information this afternoon, Mr. Volenberg, concerning the audit. We did, Mr. King.
It was late this afternoon.
It was late.
Okay, well, you can explain that then in fifth order.
Sure.
How about the firefighter and police union contracts? Are they making any progress?
I spoke to the mayor this afternoon, and it appears as though both the fire and the police are going to arbitration, and I believe that's coming up in the next few weeks.
I was looking at the city's website. I noticed that the DPW contract, which was approved last September, is still not posted. The one they have up there is the one that expired in 2021. I think someone really needs to take a hard look at that website because it's not being well-maintained. But that's where your financial information should be disclosed. Although I was impressed to see that they updated the garbage fee delinquent database. It's now as of November 30, and apparently as of that date, it had an outstanding balance of $11.5 million. Would love to see the property database go up there, too. Items 7A, B, and C. Did you ever get the resumes for those three individuals that just didn't get posted in time?
We did. We did, and they should be posted now.
Okay. I noticed a very interesting article in Sunday's paper, Brian Fulton's Day in History, 115 years ago, January 8, 1908. Naught Park to Get Swimming Pool. C.R. Acker, Scranton's Director of Public Works, recommended the creation of a public swimming pool for Naught Park in his annual expenditure report. Some time ago, the city council formally asked Acker to investigate the cost for the creation of the pool somewhere in the city. He felt Naught Park would be the proper place for the pool. He requested, listen to this, $8,000 for the project. Go figure. With regard to, I believe it's, what, 5B or 5C, changing the compensation to be paid to the position of city controller beginning in 2024, that man's getting paid $40,000 a year. Do you realize that that's one of the lowest full-time pay positions in the city for a man who holds a CPA? Now, I like John Murray, but one of these days, he's going to move on, and I don't think you'll ever get another CPA to work for 40 grand. On top of that, the payroll clerk in DPW administration makes more than he does, and the treasurer's cashier makes more than he does. Almost all the secretaries make more than he does. Now, I understand that, you know, council's been reluctant over the past years on pay raises, but you've got to do something about the controller's position. That's one of the most important and sensitive roles in the city. He is your internal watchdog, and you want to make sure that you have someone in there that's competent and is eager to serve the city. And you're not going to get many people with the qualifications that position requires to do that for $40,000 a year. Even the $13,300 pay raise is not what you're going to find most CPAs making, but I hope you get that moving and get that passed as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoda. Lee Morgan?
Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here today is that on Thursday, I don't know when they're going to play it, but I'm going to do a video on ECTV that has to do with politics in the city, and I have a guest who's going to come in and speak on that issue. So I just want everybody to, well, I would appreciate if people would look at the videos that I've done up to this point and reach your own conclusion and your own opinion on what you think of that content. And just pay attention, because I think that what you do and what you say is very important, and I call on the residents to make a change in this city for the next generation. And it's not going to be easy, but it's going to be something that is extremely necessary. And I'd like to thank the residents of the city who stood up to the Scranton School District and had them remove themselves from the recovery plan. The next thing we need here is a preschool program that covers every child in this city. We need to get our state rep and our state senator to come up with about $300 million to refurbish Scranton schools and to give the students in the city the tools they need to be successful and become educated. And we can't accept any excuse why it can't be done. And it's time for the state to pay the teachers' pensions, not the local taxpayers. The other thing I have here is Mr. King and Mr. Schmerl and the whole council at large. I've made arrangements with ECTV on the 26th at 5:30, and I would like Mr. King and Mr. Schmerl to come in and sit at a table and have a discussion on what took place at Naught Park, how the pool was removed, the decisions that led to that, the requests, if there were any, from the Scranton Recreational Authority. I'd like to know a timeline on the replacement of the pool. There's just a host of really important issues. Now, the host on a local radio station didn't think, Mr. King, that you would come and sit at a table and inform the residents of what had taken place at Naught. And there's really a total lack of faith in our government, from the presidency all the way down. And when you see what's taking place, I think it's time for Mr. Schmerl, he was on the RECC Authority, to come forward, and let's talk about how the RECC Authority surrendered its ownership of the pool and the slide and those assets. And I think we need to talk about all the money that we spent there in grants and how we, how we came to the conclusion that that's the way we should have proceeded and what role the mayor played in this whole thing. And I'd like to highlight that I think the residents need to look at the Pine Ridge Pool Complex, that when Ozzy Quinn was the president of the Scranton Lack One Taxpayers and Citizens Association, Mr. Dougherty wouldn't grant him access to that site to see if the plumbing was still in place to fill the pool, because allegedly, that's the reason they closed the pool, because somebody had taken the copper pipes.
Mr. Morgan, you mean the Pine Brook Pool?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, I mean that pool.
Sorry, thank you.
And now, I just think we need to take a very hard look at where all this grant money's going to. I think the right, the citizens have a right to know what's happening in their city, and my question is, Mr. King and the council at large, do you have any interest to sit down and meet on camera with, at ECTV in an open forum and discuss that issue?
I will tell you this, that I did approach the mayor concerning this issue, and late this afternoon, she sent us a memo with updates concerning the slide removal, and during fifth order, I believe that Mr. Schmerl is going to speak to that. And we are on ECTV right now, I believe, so.
You're right.
Happy to do it.
I'm looking for a forum where there's a given, a take, and there's information provided by you, okay, where there can be a dialogue. And this isn't a dialogue. This is like elected officials talking just to the lowly residents who have never, ever had an open dialogue with its council, because this council and previous ones, they come up with great ideas, but then they hide everything. You do write to knows, and these documents don't exist. So if the mayor's giving you something, the write-to-know office says they don't exist. And I think that you, sir--
We could put it in third order for next week, so.
Well, I think you should appear, and I think you should bring Mr. Schmerl with you, and--
I'm here this evening. I'm here this evening.
Why would you hide? I'll ask you next week. I don't think you should hide from the people you represent, none of the council members.
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Back in the summer, I was here talking about that I witnessed pit bull attack a lady in the Pine Brook section, and it just so happened that the mayor and the police chief were here that night, and I spoke to her and the chief. And I know something was passed a while back, but the mayor agreed with me, and she said she was going to meet with council because the legislation needs more teeth to it, because it's not strong enough. So has anything happened?
Les, where did that occur, again?
It was on Capous Avenue, Pine Brook section. I reported that the police chief knew about it, and he was supposed to send people over to the area where I saw, luckily, the people that owned the dog came running and saved that lady and her dog. She was okay, and I stopped and said, "Are you okay?" And she said, "Yeah," but she, I said, "Well, you should call the police." She was afraid to because of where she lives. They were afraid there might be retribution.
Over the fall time, I had a few meetings about changes in the animal legislation for the city, but nothing has happened recently that I know of, so I'll request an update on that.
Okay, because the mayor did say, she agreed with me, that the law needs more teeth to it.
So, yeah, Mr. Spindler, I think I spoke on it a little bit. I mean, I'm not in favor of breed-specific laws, but if we're going to put the onus on the owner to be more responsible.
Okay, moving on. I brought this up quite a while ago. I used to deliver auto parts for an auto part store in the Hill section, and I said, "Our, our parking enforcement people use selective enforcement. I parked the wrong way facing my house a few years ago. I wasn't in the house for that long. I came out, there was a ticket on my car. Wasn't putting anybody in danger. It's not a busy street. I go up, I used to go up and down Vine Street. The kids at the university park right to the corner, and I mean right to the corner." And the parking authorities, the parking enforcement people were made aware of it, and nothing happened. There was a time up there where there was a Jeep parked right to the corner. For three days, that Jeep wasn't moved, no ticket on it. But I faced the wrong way at my, my house, and I get a ticket. And here's an example that just brought to my attention yesterday. Got my oil changed yesterday. Where I get it changed, it's, I think it's on the 1200 block of Washington Avenue. The mechanic told me he had a car towed there. The tow truck put the car facing the wrong way. He went up to get the car, do something with the car, there was a ticket on it. Right across the street, that's where the storage buildings are being built there on Washington Avenue, there was a pickup truck facing the wrong way, and it was like within like five feet of a fire hydrant. You have to be 15 feet away. So with two violations, that truck was there in the morning when I dropped my car off and the afternoon when I picked my car up, no ticket on it. That's what I mean, but by selective enforcement, something's got to be done. If you're going to ticket one car, you got to ticket everybody. Don't play favorites. Lastly, I brought this up last week about my daughter, and she's a professional wrestler, and I had more information, you know, she broke her collarbone, she needed surgery, and this Sunday, the 15th, at Classics Bar and Grill on 1259 Brynmar Street, they're having a benefit, and I got more information. There's at least two bands, they said, just more to be announced possibly, food and drink, and I just learned tonight that there's going to be baskets for raffles, so $10 ticket in, pay at the door, no tickets. So I hope everybody could show up. I know, and there's going to be a lot of wrestlers there. If you want to come and meet some wrestlers, we'd appreciate it. It should be a good time. So thank you for your time, and hope to see everybody Sunday.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Charles Cortez. Myself and my family are residents and multiple property owners in the 200 block of Wheeler Avenue. I am here tonight concerning the zoning of the 200 block of Colfax Avenue, which will affect the 200 block of Wheeler Avenue, the 1700 block of Roslyn, and the entire community of Scranton. It is my understanding that the new proposal for zoning is to split the 200 block of Colfax Avenue into two separate zones. One side of the street is to be zoned institutional, and the other side of the street is to be zoned civic. The major difference is that the primary structure is 45 feet for the institutional and 100 feet for the civics. I cannot wrap my mind around why any reason to split a single block into two separate zoning areas with distinct restrictions on opposite sides of the street. What value added would there be for the city of Scranton to do this? With this new proposal, we, the residents of the 200 block of Wheeler Avenue, will have a 100-foot-high wall in our backyard, which will further depreciate the value of our property, and a 45-foot-high wall will be of no consequences facing Naught Park. We now live in a residential area and have, for a long time, had a burden of the hospitals, both Geisinger and the Community Medical Centers, aggressive expansion plans. The tax base loss due to Geisinger and the Community Medical Center expansion plan has, has been and will continue to be a burden to the rest, to the residents of Scranton's property owners. The devaluation of our property is unmeasurable, and our tax base will never reflect this devaluation. Please do not let Geisinger force their will on the residents of Naught area community and the citizens of Scranton with total disregard for its citizens and its tax base. We, the Naught area community, strongly support the zoning criteria of institutional with 45-feet-tall buildings and permitted use for the entire 200 block of Colfax Avenue. We are open to compromise, for it is the American way to resolve our differences. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez.
Hello, council. I guess if anybody's going to ruin your day, it's me, isn't it? I went to court today. Of course, I lost. I guess there's been several phone calls made about this. I don't know if any of you saw this last Tuesday. I'm going to tell you what it says, just one sentence. The gentleman's name, I don't know if I'm saying it right, Gar Anan. He sued the city and several city officials for violating his due process rights. He also lets the city unfairly targeted several of his properties because code enforcement employees disliked him. He won the suit. He got $285,000 from the city. This is exactly what I've been going through with Oluski and Mr. Sunday. Today in court, Mr. Sunday presented a picture that was taken in November of my front porch with the two cases of cokes on it. There's an American flag. They call that rubbish. And the side of my house was a dog carrier, you know, I don't know the proper-- that's been gone for weeks. He said in court today, he took those pictures yesterday. I said to Mr. Ware, "That is a blatant lie." My mailman could even, I could bring my mailman in here. My house has been different for weeks. This is what I've been going through with those people. I'm going to appeal that, and you want to put this city on the map, I'll put it on the map, but the mayor won't like it. This place is just consumed. These two men are consumed with their hatred for me, and this was nothing but a vindictive response to all my complaints in here. I don't know how many years I've complained about everything. Nothing ever's answered. You could go tomorrow and make a big circle of my neighborhood, and everything I've complained about for two and three years is there. Broken-down cars in the street, right there where my property ends, it goes back 160-something feet. On Troop Street, there's a car been there for four years. There's a school bus I complained about in the, in his driveway. The house next door is full of broken-down junk in the backyard and driveway. At the end of Troop Street by the railroad tracks, there's a car been there a year. People parking on the lawns that ruined them. Nothing like this was there when, you know, five, six, eight years ago. My neighborhood has deteriorated because Mr. Oluski's, Oluski's office has hired one, just one incompetent after another. And if anybody wants to see my insurance papers, I'll bring them next week, and you can examine them. It says, my house was insured for 100, I forgot, 140,000 or something. They told me it's worth about half that now because of my neighborhood declining so much, and it's declining so much because of this incompetent mayor that wants all these people that aren't any good. Like I said, if anybody wants to see it, I'll bring it next week. If I was in council, I'd subpoena those two clowns to be sitting at this desk next week and confront me for what I'm saying. You got subpoena power, use it. They belong in here to answer for what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Good evening. I've come here tonight, I've come several times in the past years, because I think it's my duty as a resident and citizen of Scranton all my life, but I'm very discouraged, okay? I'm here once again about the CMC renovations and moving on. Proposal has come up, where the even side of the 200 block of Colfax is going to be institutional, and the odd side is going to be civic. At one time, there was 17 homes on that block. Beautiful homes, beautiful neighborhood, 35 children. And of course, the CMC, you know, progressed, and I have said here that they need to progress. I understand that. One of the homes in the 200 block of Colfax partially belongs to me, okay? And it's empty now. The CMC doesn't want to talk about it. Five homes remain on that even side. They don't want to talk about it. Now, we've had realtors. Those five homes, the value of them have depreciated. If the CMC wants, and they say they do want those homes, what games are they playing? We were neighbors that stood behind them for years, put up a lot. We still do. I'm not happy, and seeing those homes go down was grief to me, okay? But I know progress has to take over, and that's the way it is. But I want to know when you are going to vote on this, this proposal to do institutional and civic.
I was covering that in fifth order, Mrs. Williams.
Okay. Because our houses, those five homes that are in really nice condition yet, it looks like a war zone sometimes, okay, up there? We've had real, we've had realtors. You're not going to get nothing for these. Who is going to buy a home that an H2 garage is going to be built and a hospital is going to expand? We elect you people, and I've always had the faith in who I elected to your seats to serve the people and the neighborhoods. It's time you people spoke up to Geisinger and said, and asked them, "What's going on? The games have to stop." The games have to stop. Our neighborhood's gone. It's gone. But they just want to leave it sitting there now. I'm very upset. Okay, upset. Anyway, another thing about the pools, because I grew up, I grew up right there. I heard, and I don't know if it's true, that the mayor gave the go-ahead to get rid of the pool and smashed the slide into pieces. Why? Why don't the residents and the neighbors know what is going on in this city? I have never been so upset over city council as I am with you people, and I know a few of yous. It's time, I'm gonna say it again, that you start speaking up for the neighbors and the taxpayers and the residents and the children of this city, because the children don't have much. The playgrounds are deplorable, even at Naught. Years ago, Mayor Doherty got, we all got together and made a playground up there. Deplorable, and even other parks in the city. When are we gonna start to come together? A hospital, yes, we need hospitals. I'm asking you people to start thinking, thinking about who puts you people in those seats, who we have faith in, who's gonna fight for us? Somebody has to. Please think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
Good evening, counsel. Jay Dodson, resident, taxpayer. I wish with all of these grand expansion plans the CMC would take in patients from Scranton. I've been on a circling pattern for a whole year with a ninety percent block carotid artery. Be a help if they get me in there. Probably the tests are already out of date, so do I trust them to take more tests and have them put me on another one-year circling pattern till something serious happens, or do I go to another hospital? Enough of that for me. Once again, taxes. Thirty-eight percent tax-exempt and growing. Now, here's my idea. Tax-exempt institutions, et cetera, should be willing to help get compensation from the state to offset the tax loss, because the cities get, grow into trouble, and it's just gonna be, you know, it'll be a couple more years, and we'll be right back to where we were, back in whenever. And it wasn't too bad by the end of the Connors administration, but the debts just kept And there's several religious groups popping up that, they're preaching mainly hate, and we should look into that. I'm tired of seeing them get by tax-free. And schools, no matter what they are, should teach science, math, and uncensored history age-appropriate. There's, down in Florida, there's one thousand books have been, including, the name just drifted out of my mind, but the girl that was in the Holocaust, Anne Frank, her history book was outlawed in Florida school districts. And we have people like that in Pennsylvania, so. Now, last week, I spoke about the PUC rates and how we were actually paying for people much more well-heeled than we are, paying for their sewage treatment and for the water company to buy them up, run them for them, and that's just grand. Well, we shouldn't have to pay anything. It should be deducted out of our payments. I don't, we were banned from it by the consumer commissions in Pennsylvania. And now I have a new one. I'm starting to run low on time here. Meanwhile, this is January 1st editorial. Meanwhile, the DEP should begin the new year by rejecting the landfill's request to partially evade a costly step in wastewater disposal by dumping up to 200,000 gallons a day into Little Roaring Brook, which feeds into Roaring Brook, runs over the falls in Naught and down to the Lackawanna River and Susquehanna and Chesapeake Bay. They call it reverse osmosis. To me, what that means is the money flows up to the landfill, and I get the pollution and get to pay a bigger bill because the water never gets cleaned up going into the Chesapeake Bay. I get stuck with more stringent standards if they test Lackawanna River water and realize, oh, my God, we got all these pollutants. The question is, if you have a DCAL battery or a nine-volt battery or a lot of other nasty substances, what do you do with them? They go in the trash. They just go in the trash, they get dissolved by the universal solvent, water, and they wash out in their crudité water or whatever the hell you want to call it. So, thank you, and I'll have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson. You, too.
I would like to introduce you to this young man, on his five minutes, I might add. But you might remember, a short time ago, he made a presentation or prepared a presentation that I gave for him on the soul vapor sign that was on Music Street and blocking traffic vision. And he, yesterday, he had a new issue, and so this time I said, you know, you're capable. I think you should come and present it yourself. So, I'm going to stand aside, and he's going to tell you his issue.
Hello, I am Eli Verchuk from Two Leslie Drive, and I am here to talk to you about the Leslie Drive street sign. On Leslie Drive in the East Mountain section of Scranton, a utility pole has recently been removed due to an automobile accident at the corner of Leslie Drive and 307 North. However, the pole housed the street sign for Leslie Drive and must be replaced. I am requesting that you use a metal pole to house the street sign, however, placed further back so it does not require drivers to pull out into the road to see if the coast is clear, as the previous utility pole was blocking the site of traffic. The red circle on the handout I just gave you marks the area where a Leslie Drive street sign is needed. I don't know how people are supposed to get around in this city without street signs, but I am asking you to please contact the Department of Public Works, or DPW, to please have a new Leslie Drive street sign installed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my turn. I'm having a hard time. Every day that goes by, and I don't get a recycle calendar, I have a hard time believing that they were mailed on December 16th. This is, I know it's available, and I know I can access it, but it's wrong. Everybody knew the year was going to end. That could have been prepared and out before the holiday, in my, now, next question.
You still haven't received one, Mrs. Williams?
I still have not. Acoustics in this room, could somebody, maybe during fifth order or fifth order next week, give us the status of when the acoustics in this room are going to be improved? That is critical. Now, I would like to end with, last week, Mr. King, you said that you were looking forward to working with all of you to help move our city forward in a positive direction.
Correct.
Yes. And what I'd like you to do with the rest of my time, if you would please tell us what vision you have for, how will we tell the difference between this time, 2022 or 23, and 2024? I would, someday, I'd like to have, I was gonna ask each of you what you see happening over the next twelve months.
Okay, well, how about I come back here next week, and I will lay out all the things that I'm hoping to see us accomplish over this next year, okay?
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Hi, Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And I only have one thing to ask, and maybe you're going to mention it later, about the Martin Luther King activities. Maybe, Jessica, do you have something or something or someone up there is gonna talk about the activities that were in place? I was just, someone was just texting me, and it seems that the information was sent to City Hall and to the mayor's office. So, I hope one of you do have the activities that are gonna be taking place, and you can mention that. I don't have them. I only know that there's a dinner on Sunday at university. So, maybe one of you have the information to share, okay?
And I apologize, Mrs. Jeffries, I skipped over announcements for council, so we will get back to that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Announcements on behalf of the council members for this evening.
I have a few. Last week, I was appointed to the chair of the Committee on Public Works, so I decided to see what Public Works was all about. I had met with Larry West, who is overseeing the Public Works Department at this time. We went to multiple sites, mostly on water runoff sites, roads freezing over, and flooded areas. We were on multiple parts of the city, and some of the places were being repaired by the DPW Department with the equipment that they have. A lot of the other sites where there's a lot of flooding and water damage can't be done by DPW, so therefore, has to be, studies be done on them, and then they've got to be bid out and repaired from there. Places like Parrot Avenue, I thought that was just a blocked drain. It turns out, it's not just a blocked drain, it's eighteen feet into the ground. The city simply doesn't have the equipment to dig an eighteen-foot hole, and they have to drop steel cages in there to repipe and stuff. So, everything that I thought was a simple fix, I guess, really isn't a simple fix until you go out and see what actually is going on. It also took me to seven bridges that are being replaced in the city of Scranton probably over the next ten years. Most have been cut down in size and in weight class because of the age. Some of them are just riding away because of poor design years ago. Another thing we did was go down to the DPW Department, and I went over all of the equipment that the city owns and what all the equipment does. I learned how many Pac Masters garbage trucks we have and how many workers it takes to run each of the trucks. Also went to the Traffic Division to see what they do. I didn't know there were so many multiple divisions down there, but there are. There's a Garage Division, there's an Engineer down there. There's a bunch of things that I didn't know, and Mr. West spent hours with me yesterday, and we traveled throughout the city and went through all of this. So, we spoke of the paving program that's coming, also different aspects of the DPW workers and what they actually do, and what we can't do because we're simply not big enough. Our department's not big enough to do a lot of that work. And a few other things, I went over how many employees there were and what projects that the city actually is doing and where they have paved prior. And the paving project is being compiled right now. It seems that they get a thousand requests. They've got to go to each site, check each of those blocks to see if some of the, if they really do require paving. Some of the streets we went on, there's really nothing wrong. It's just somebody wants to get it paved because there's a crack in it. Some of them don't require paving, but a lot of them do. A lot of them, we were in the 500-block of one street and the five, but the 600-block is even worse. So, you know, that's why it's taking a time to go out and find these things. You just can't say, okay, who wants their street paved? You've got to go out and make a list, and then we have to prioritize them, because, well, simply, we don't have $20 million to pave the city. So, that's something else we're working on. And one last thing with the DPW, Norma, the DPW advised the Catch Basin on the corner of East Gibson Street and Manuel Avenue, that is going to be repaired by Leeward Construction, okay? And there were, there are other ones that I had concerns with. On East Mountain, there's probably fifteen spots of runoff up there. That's years of work. So, things like that, they are working on certain things where they can handle it, but there's a lot of stuff that's going to have to be studied and put out to bid, okay? That's pretty much on the DPW. On the Naught Park pools, I was on the Recreation Authority when this all took place. I was there and had a big part in what had occurred up there. A lot of the things we were forced to do at one point because of safety concerns. The large pool where the sliding boards or the diving boards were, that pool was losing thousands of gallons of water a day. We found that out because one day I was asked about the water bill. So, we start checking it, we start monitoring the meter, and overnight, when you lose six or seven thousand gallons of water, where is it going? Which led us into a deeper look at the pool. We are no pool experts. The Recreation Authority is supposed to oversee the park, but we took it upon ourselves to try to find out what was going on. So, you could hear the water running constantly, you could see the meter running constantly, and the pool was, the sidewalks were beginning to sink out of that pool. So, that pool, at that point, I decided I was going to close it. I went to the board and explained to them of the safety hazard. I didn't know if it was being washed out from underneath, but nor can you dump six or seven thousand gallons of water a day of chlorinated water into where? We just simply don't know where it was going. So, that pool was closed by the Recreation Authority. It had nothing to do with the city. The following year, our second pool, where the slides go into it. The slides, great part, but that became the big pool now, and it was very busy. The liner had began to peel from the inside. There was, one day, there was like a fifteen-foot round bubble in the center of the pool where the liner had pushed back up. So, we had called pool people and places and asked, you know, what's the cure? There is no cure for that. Evidently, water had gotten underneath that also and had ruined the adhesive, whatever was holding it together. Now, granted, the liner was very old, and the pools are fifty, sixty years old? So, at that point, the liner, we start pushing, trying to keep the liner down and tried to keep the pool open for the rest of the summer, which we did. But that also began to lose massive amounts of water, and it became, the last few days, it was just a ridiculous price to pay to keep a pool open, to spend thousands of dollars on. open, to spend thousands of dollars on water and chemicals and whatever else we had to do to try to maintain it. So we closed that pool. Me, we mean the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority. We closed that pool. Then the pools, our idea was to, on the, where the diving boards were, was to put a large splash pad. Large enough, a handicap-style splash pad, but a very large splash pad. Of course, we didn't know we were getting the money, but that was our idea. And we wanted to replace the existing slide pool. Put a new pool, tear that one out, and put a new one in. We were thinking at a time to put a new liner into that pool, but structurally, it was there so many years, we don't know what's underneath it. We didn't know if it was leaking, so, you know, to spend $40,000 or $50,000 on a liner seemed kind of foolish, so we didn't do it. We actually worked with the city. The city paid and put out for bid. The backfilling of the pools, the pools had to be demolished, the concrete walls, floors had to be cut up into certain-sized stone so that it could compact after a few years and that would, we would be able to, after it was backfilled and compact, it would be able to drop down and we would be able to then put our splash pad in. That's something that couldn't happen overnight because of the size of them. We were advised to do it that way. The city of Scranton paid for all of that, not the Recreation Authority. We simply don't have that money. They didn't have that money. So that was all paid by the city and agreed to by the Recreation Authority. We also agreed to remove the old pump house because it was falling down. There were holes in it, the doors, you could just crawl underneath the doors and get in. That structure was extremely old. So our plan was to move the electricity from that port. All of that giant service went in there, over 400 amp service went into that building. It was dispersed from there out to different parts of the park. So we could not just eliminate that. So we had to move it to a building behind that pool, which was, at one time, I was told it was called the Clam House. But we put a roof on that, we put doors on it, painted it, cleaned it up, and the city paid to have the entire electrical system moved from the pump house to that back house or to the back building. And that was also done by the city with the, I guess, permission of the Recreation Authority. We didn't have the money, it was put out for bid, we all knew it was put out to be bid. I was up there with the engineers and went over everything. Now, what happened after that? After everything was taken down, a year goes by and naturally, we feel that we want this giant splash pad, and we also want the pool replaced to accommodate our existing slides. We thought that was the best thing to do, and we all agreed on that. And that didn't quite happen. So the next thing that happened was the slides were taken down and dismantled. I also tried to find out, and as of last night, that was when my questions went into the mayor's office, and we received this afternoon her response to that. I don't think it's fair to go over this right now without, you know, reading the entire thing so I can, I read through it quickly, I see her complaints, her concerns, and I understand she would like a master plan of doing the entire area over instead of just dropping a pool down under the slides. Not what I want to do, but it's your tax dollars. So that's something that's going to have to be worked out with the new Recreation Authority or with the new Municipal Recreation Authority and the city. But all of the other things were agreed upon, removing the pools, doing everything. The only thing I had no knowledge of was the removal of the slides. I did quickly read this over and I understand the funding. No one wants to raise their taxes, including me. But if we're going to do, my idea of the original plan, it was a $14 million plan. We simply don't have that money, we'd have to finance it, and we're just getting out of distressed city status. So are we looking to dump another $14 million? I don't know the answer for Naug Park. I guess that's for the Recreation Authority and the mayor to do. I'd like to be involved in it. I will be up at the meetings at the Recreation Authority and try to figure it out from there. But that's what's going on with the pools. Nothing secret, nothing, that's what happened. The age, and everybody knows the age, when I was a kid, I swam there, and they're the same structure, the same pools. So they've got old and they were, it was time. It was time to move on. So I don't want to be without a pool up there, to be honest with you. I wish that we had $14 million to do that. But believe me, I will fight for every nickel to put it back the way it was. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Maggie, Mr. Smurl. Anyone else have any announcements?
Yes, I had two. And to respond to Ms. Jeffries, who had asked about the MLK celebration dinner, I do have some more of the details on that that I could share, so that's going to be taking place this Sunday, January 15th, from 1:30 to 4 o'clock. And there's going to be a hybrid event. So first, there's going to be featured a dinner, followed by a virtual livestream with a keynote speaker and an in-person guest panel discussion. So I believe you could decide whether or not you want to attend in person or virtually for that. The ticket cost is $25, and you could find a link for registration through the Scranton Area Community Foundation. And so that's the Greater Scranton MLK Commission Annual Celebration Dinner that will be taking place at the University of Scranton in the DeNaples Center and the Michelini Ballroom on the fourth floor. So those are the details that I have on that. I'm not sure of if we've received anything else for additional celebrations or MLK events. I know the Beth La Amy Church usually has theirs as well. And the second thing that I just wanted to bring up, I wanted to congratulate the Scranton School District for their exit from recovery status. I think that it speaks to the positive financial direction that the city is moving in. I think there are still plenty of issues that need to be addressed with the school district and ways that we could improve our schools, but I'm happy to see that they're on a better footing and that the state thinks so as well and that they can move forward out of recovery. So now, the city is out of Act 47, the school district is out of recovery. I think this is a really positive thing that I'm excited about. And that's all that I have for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to, Jess, I'm not sure, did you mention, associated with the Greater Scranton Martin Luther King Commission, that one of the activities is going to happen at Scranton High School? I don't know if I heard you say that, but...
I did not, so if you have...
Belonging and Inclusion: How Othering Affects Society, it's hosted at Scranton High School from 4 until 6 p.m. In addition, they're also sponsoring The Mountain by Katori Hall, a play of fictional adaptation in The Life of Martin Luther King Jr. at the Providence Playhouse. For times and tickets, go to www actor circle dot com slash main three dot P H P. Thank you. So now, moving to fifth order, I'll ask, Mr. Smurl, do you have any motions or comments for fifth order?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Sushu, sir?
I spoke on it on third order, but we did get that information from the business administrator about the overtime. If we could just have that in third order for next week. Also, the street sign on Leslie Drive, if we could send that over to DPW?
I will, sir.
I think, Mr. King, you're going to speak about the zoning, like the timeline we got on tonight, so. This year, was this something that was decided upon by council or was just something that got sent over from the administration as a timeline of events?
This was something that I had requested from the administration and it was forwarded to me this afternoon.
Okay. All right. That's all.
Dr. Rothkell?
I just wanted to mention that last week, I had some questions about a few of the resolutions and for appointments that were on our agenda that are in seventh order this evening. So now the resumes have been attached for the ones that were missing last week. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
I have two. We'll start with the acoustics. Where are we at with it? We've been talking about it for almost three years, so please inquire with the administration where we're at with that.
I will, Mr. McAndrew.
And then, secondly, I would like also the project status of the Pocket Park on Washington Avenue. I want the status of the project, I want an update to include how much money is still set aside for that. I believe it was like $400,000 or $500,000. So I'd like to see where we're at, what's the holdup, and an overall project status.
I'll reach out to Scranton tomorrow on that, sir.
Thank you. And that is all I have.
Okay, I have several items. So I'll start off with some responses from last week. I know Doris Kalowski's here. Richard Iannuzzo, the Scranton Police Department Traffic Officer, will instruct Scranton Police Patrol to enforce the permit parking violations in the 400 block of Colfax that you had mentioned. Also, a request was sent to DPW to review and repair the remaining handicap corner cutouts at the corner of Colfax and Olive Street as well that you had requested. And Per Don King, the city planner, the large group of vacant lots on Monroe and Madison Avenues between the two hospitals have no immediate plans for development. Planning will advise council with any updates as that occurs. Also, 421 Colfax Avenue is currently in a condemned status. Code Enforcement Management is following up with OECD regarding possible demolition of that property. Mrs. Hodawanitz had questions concerning IT. IT advised that as of January 9th, that website issues are being addressed, the issues regarding historical items are being addressed. Any current information submitted is placed on the website within 14 hours of receipt, although there's, you clearly pointed out, there's some things that they've had receipt of for quite a while that still need to be updated, so we'll stay on top of that. Mrs. Schumacher had questions. City Parks and Rec Director advised any single signs designating the pool have been removed. Only multi-informational signs that contain a pool reference remain and need to be replaced. We have been, you were provided with some updated documentation via email attachments for inquiries related to NOSMAN, LERTA, SSA escrow account balances, and Naug Park master plan update. I would also like to announce that I was at the Scranton School District this afternoon or this morning at 1 o'clock for the signing by Dr. Eric Agarde, the Acting Secretary of Education, along with Candace Finan, who's the Recovery Officer, and Superintendent Mrs. McTirrenan, and then all the administration, and the mayor was there, along with our city tax collector and several other dignitaries from the city. I thought it was a great day of celebration that our school district is now out of recovery financially. They went into recovery in 2019 and they got out a lot earlier than was expected. And in fact, I believe they now have a $17 million surplus, or I don't want to say surplus, but they have in their rainy day fund available, which they've never really had in the past. I thought it was a great day, as I said, you know, for our city, for our school district. Now both the city and the school district are out of recovery, yet plenty of work continues and exists. We all know that, we have to stay diligent. And hopefully, you know, the city and the school district can work together when possible with shared services and things of this nature. And hopefully, I am optimistic that our school district will rise to where it was in the past. They're certainly on the right track, and I commend the school boards that have worked on that and had to make hard decisions. So I thought that was a great day for our city and for the school district, and most importantly, for the students of the city of Scranton. In terms of the zoning ordinance timeline, I know Doris, I had mentioned that I thought we were going to be reintroducing that this week. However, I spoke to the law department and to the mayor, and they want to make sure that we do our due diligence and we follow to, you know, to the letter of the law to make sure of the proper vetting and advertising of this zoning ordinance before it ultimately comes back here to city council for introduction and final vote. So during the week of January 23rd, the Planning Commission will have a public hearing on the changes and the updates to the zoning ordinance. On January 31st, city council will introduce the proposed ordinance. On February 7th, city council will vote to advance the proposed ordinance on a second reading, and then we will table it. Then on March 21st, city council will have a public hearing on the new zoning ordinance, and it's expected that that evening, March 21st, there will be a vote on, to enact the proposed zoning ordinance. So the key dates for us and city council are January 31st, February 7th, and then again on March 21st, it's expected for final vote.
Can I get, like, the, the...
Sure. I don't know, can we place this in third order, Frank? Or post it somewhere?
I believe we can.
Let's see if we can get it posted on the website or something as well. Okay.
And if you stick around for...
You can have my copy before you leave.
There you go.
There we go.
Also, it was mentioned about the Naug Slide removal, and I did have a conversation with our mayor concerning the Naug Slide removal. As far as I know, this council was never involved in any decision-making that occurred with the demolition of the slide. So for, I know that Mr. Morgan wants me to come in here someday on ECTV to address this. I'm addressing it right now on ECTV. As far as I know, council was not involved in any decision-making concerning the demolition of the slide at Naug Pool. That was made between the administration and with the rec authority. So I asked her for an update and for some information concerning exactly what occurred. In all fairness, as Mr. Smurl had indicated, we just got this literally, I would say probably 4:00, 4:30 this afternoon. So I want to be able to take some time to read through it and then maybe we can report back on this maybe next week. But, you know, at the end of the day, I know, you know, as I said, Mr. Morgan's not here. Typically, he'll speak and then he leaves, so he's not here to be able to hear this. Hopefully, he's watching it at home, I don't know. But truly, I requested the information from the administration who were involved in these decisions. As far as I know, there was never a vote, there was never any contact to council to be involved.
They found out that day that the slides had come down.
Right.
The night before.
So it really wouldn't make sense, you know, for us to sit there, and plus, you know, we're telling you what we know now, and we requested information from the administration. Just got it literally late this afternoon. Want to be able to read through it, and then we'll get back to all of you. And I believe we got a memo from Larry West, and you mentioned that earlier, on DPW for end-of-year overtime. And did we say we were going to post that?
Yes.
Yeah, that'll be in third order for next week. Quite a bit, but I think I covered everything.
Did we receive something with the, on the audit? Any updates on the audit?
Oh, the only thing I have on the audit, I think, let me just check.
I just checked my email, I didn't see anything that came in.
Mr. King, there's two outstanding items. One is the Scranton Store Authority Audit, and the other is the Fixed Asset Report. There was some conflicting information due to Open Gov, so they're correcting that. And the auditors will be in the building tomorrow.
Okay, so we can probably, we can expect that in short order, hopefully before the end of January? So we can expect that in short order, hopefully before the end of January?
I'll follow up and get a date.
Thank you very much. If you can get a date for us on that, we greatly appreciate it.
5B for an induction in ordinance establishing permit parking on the 1500 block of Pine Street.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved?
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I know we reached out several times to the authors of the petition that was sent in. I know we've discussed some of the pros and the cons. I mean, at this point in time, it seems like maybe the cons outweigh the pros, but I would hope that, well, as we move forward, this item's going to be tabled, and we're going to do a public hearing. So I would hope that the authors and signers of the petition come in to let council know what they were thinking when they got this ball rolling. Thank you.
On the question, I'll vote to introduce the legislation again, but I also have some questions and concerns still, and that I'll be looking for answers for, so I'd like to hear from some more of the residents who live on that street and sign the petition for the permit parking during, at the time of a public hearing.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to table item 5B.
Second.
It's been a motion on the floor, and second, to table item 5B. This piece of legislation is being tabled to allow for advertisement of a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, January 24th, at 5:45 p.m. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction in ordinance establishing compensation to be paid to the position of controller beginning in 2024.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved?
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I agree with the salary increase for the controller position. I think it's a shame that it's been so long since that position has had an increase, so I'm fully supportive. I believe Ms. Hodawanet's had some very good points when she was speaking during public comment, which I agree with, so.
And on the question also, this salary has sat at $40,000 since the year 2000. We are bumping it up to $53,300, which is equal to the Scranton tax collector, and I truly believe it's long overdue. So I will be supporting this as well.
Also, on the question, I agree wholeheartedly. There is a lot of new positions over the past few years that make a lot more than the controller's position, and with the amount of responsibility that him and his office has, it's greatly warranted.
If I could also note, if this ultimately passes, this raise will not begin until January of 2024. It can only occur in the year that election, an election is happening. So we're really raising the salary of the controller and not necessarily the person presently sitting in the controller's office. Hopefully, and I believe he's going to run again, but that raise would not be realized until January 1 of 2024 if this goes through. All in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the local law enforcement grant program for funds up to $304,000 to be used towards the technology and information technology improvements and the non-reoccurring personnel costs for sworn officers.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved?
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file the Council number 45, 2023, an ordinance making minor amendments to file the Council number 37, 2022, regarding gaming machine licenses and peddler licenses.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A passed reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 177, 2023, reappointment of Tom Welby, 119 Park Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, to serve as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority. Tom Welby will be reappointed to the seat Mr. Welby vacated on February 4th, 2022. The vacancy was now filled. Mr. Welby's unexpired term is set to expire May 31st, 2023.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 178, 2023, appointment of Joseph Enton, MS, 1122 Woodlawn Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509, as a member of the Planning Commission effective upon execution of resolution. Mr. Enton will be replacing Jane Rizzi, who resigned December 13th, 2022. Mr. Enton will fill the unexpired four-year term of Ms. Rizzi that will expire December 31st, 2024.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 179, 2023, appointment of Christopher McClatchy, 906 North Irving Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as an alternate member of the Civil Service Commission. Mr. McClatchy's term will be effective upon execution of the resolution, and his term will end with the term of Mayor Page G. Cognetti in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Civil Service Commission.
As chairperson on the Committee for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 181, 2023, appointment of Sonia Lobo, 440 Wheeler Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority. Ms. Lobo will be replacing Gerald Smurl, who resigned. Ms. Lobo will fill the unexpired term of Mr. Smurl that will expire June 18th, 2025.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 182, 2022, 23, appointment of Dylan Colley, 1511 Jackson Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority. Ms. Colley will be replacing Michael Williams, whose term expired December 31st, 2022. Ms. Colley's term is effective upon execution of the resolution, and her five-year term will expire December 31st, 2027.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution number 183, 2023, appointment of Pamela Anslinger, 1018 Luke Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority. Ms. Anslinger will be replacing Terry Millard, whose term expired December 31st, 2022. Ms. Anslinger's term is effective upon execution of the resolution, and her five-year term will expire December 31st, 2027.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, Resolution number 176, 2023.
This piece of legislation is liquor license transfer. It has been tabled until a public hearing can be held on January 17th, 2023, at 5:45 If there are no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting's adjourned.